I'm a mathematician, but I'm all $4,000.
I think there was a $4,000.
Yeah, there was a $4,000 typo on one of the line items. I can't remember where it was.
Did you mark which one, where it was, Monroe?
Their total is 58, 5,855, 625.02, and I come up with 58, 5,851,625.
No, that's because what, what happened is I had to add an additional, for clarification purposes. Originally, I had only dropped the improvements to parks to 8,000. But then I noticed that in my calculations, I recorded one of Christine's figures incorrectly by 4,000. So I made that adjustment and removed another 4,000 from the improvements to the parks.
So what is the correct amount, please?
So the correct amount would be $4,000.
No, the correct amount is...
The correct amount is there.
106,690.
It's different from what you're...
Three cents.
What is on the ordinance?
What's the grand total is correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is on the ordinance is the correct amount.
No, it's not. If you, if you total that column, it's going to come out $4,000 less than that total. Unless...
It shouldn't, because we added it two or three times.
Let me, let me add. I think it needs to be looked at. I come up with $4,000 less than this total.
Sal's adding it up on a calculator.
Let's just double check that and see if, if we have the same thing. I do have a point of order that maybe we could address in that, which is, do we not need to also give special status to revising the budget?
Yes.
I guess it's not an ordinance. We don't need special status, but we really need to revise the budget before appropriating these funds.
Can we, can we address that?
And we could do both now.
Can we address that now while we're in the process adding that up? Because I...
Otherwise, we're in the same situation where we have a budget that doesn't match the ordinance.
You amend the budget before you do the ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct?
Right.
So I think the first thing on the table isn't the ordinance. The first thing on the table is the revised budget.
Yeah. Well, the, the motion was just to make this an emergency.
Right.
For the ordinance.
Which we can do.
Which you can do. You go ahead and vote on that, and then vote to amend it, and then go into the review.
So let's get this total, and then we'll finish that to give it emergency status. But before we actually vote on passing it, we'll look at the revised budget.
What was the total when you reduced this budget? What was the total?
It was in the parks, you say, Bob?
It was about 39,000 in parks and 24,000 in police and dispatch. Correct?
What was the total? Did you reduce this budget?
It was 37 for the vehicle. And then we reduced the improvements to the park by six. So that was 43.
Okay, I have...
67.
And then there was $24,000 for the police.
24 for the police?
Yes.
And I had 30, I came up with 39,000 out of the parks.
I come up with 43 out of the...
No, it's 43 for the parks.
Because he took the vehicle out and...
Because the vehicle was 37,000 alone.
Okay, okay.
And then another six.
And then six came from the improvements.
Yeah.
Because it was originally 10,000 budgeted for improvements.
So what did you get as a surplus in the general funds, or did you do that math? I, I came up with a $3,000 surplus for general funds, which you would come up with more. You'd probably be about six. So either way, we're in the black. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
He's still coming up with the bottom line.
No, that ain't, that wasn't the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, no, I'm done. I was trying to answer your question. How much is this different?
I was asking the city how much they reduced the budget. The, the park and the police were 67,000. But if you take this total from the total...
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, we found it.
He didn't reduce.
It was my...
No, I just, I just got to that too, yeah, 4,000.
I didn't reduce it. I had $110,000 listed on your expenditure sheet.
Yeah.
And should be 106.
And it should be 106, which is what Sharon has correctly recorded.
It's 5,851,625 and 2 cents.
That was what I come up with.
So that, according to my figures, which you don't have any, but you've reduced the budget by $63,000.
More than roughly 63 some odd thousand.
No, 63 even is what I made.
37,000.
67,000.
I'm sorry?
43,000 from the park and 24 from the police is 67,000.
But you've got to, you've got to take this 4,000.
But we took the 4,000, yes.
Probably that makes it 63,000. Is everybody...
Yeah, that's, that's actually what I...
Yeah, there was, yeah.
That's what I get, too. 63,000 on Mr. Sheen's sheet.
I don't have any more questions. I tell them. Okay. So we have 5,000,000.
851.
5, 851, 625, and 2 cents.
Okay. Call the roll.
And this is to give specials, this was special status.
We already did this, make it special status. It's already been called.
I thought we just called roll call for being here.
Yeah, we, somebody got to make a call.
We already did.
We made a motion, and Kathy seconded it, but we didn't vote on it.
But we didn't vote.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, the roll was called.
The roll was called, yeah.
Okay.
Did?
Okay.
I must have been asleep.
No, the only one that didn't vote was Larry, because he had just come in.
Yeah.
So it has special status?
It has special status.
So now we can consider it.
Okay.
Do we got to do the budget first?
To amend the budget.
To amend the budget.
Yeah.
To amend the budget.
Okay. Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Robin?
Uh-uh, no.
No, okay.
No, no way.
I have a question?
No.
Why?
You have no question. This is, this is a special meeting, and it's for the council only.
The council would like to take a question.
You will not answer, say anything at this meeting.
Man, why does it have to get confrontational like this? Can, can we not...
I just have a question.
No. You do not speak.
Um, I'd, I'd make a motion that the council entertain, listening to what Robin, her question is, whether or not we answer it or not. For a second.
That motion's out of line, point of order. I preside.
I can make a motion. I'm not presiding.
No, that's true.
I make that motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I second it. I mean, I can hear what she has to say.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, call the roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah, I'm under it.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, Litter.
Yes.
Janine, Mr. Pauls?
Yeah.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Uh, it's two minutes. Is that right?
It actually is five, if you allow our to speak.
It's a yes, no vote.
Mr. Wood?
I just have two really quick questions. The first question is, why is this being the necessity to be called special? Why that status given to this?
Because as it stands now, we have no funds appropriated to pay bills.
Okay, there's, you can't pay any bills?
Can't make payroll tomorrow if this isn't approved.
Does that mean that no bills have been paid at all? No bills?
That I would have to check.
Since June 1, no.
Pardon me?
Not since June 1.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was asking Sharon if she pays it.
No checks have been written since June 1.
No checks have been written since the old budget was gended?
Yeah.
So we put no bills at all?
That's correct.
That's all we need.
All right. So do you, did you want me to?
Yeah, we can, we can...
So I, I guess informally, before making a motion to approve the revised budget, um, we, and I, and I shared my notes, not to overwhelm anyone with paper. I'm tempted to not share my notes in the future, because it's, in the past, it's been a reason to not continue talking, because everyone wants to take a moment to study my notes. But I shared it so that you can read what's here. I would suggest that we have a little bit of a discussion about this. I, I know Sal and I are, um, are on, are for it, but we have some questions. And, and what we would like to do is get this passed, but we'd like to ask for some consideration by the administration in the next 90 days to help answer some things. So if we're headed in the same direction, there's not a problem. We're anticipating approving this, but I'd like to take the time to go through, through this and, and express where we see those things are and what those questions are. Is that reasonable?
And for me, I think I have, again, I think I have a grasp on it, but I just need some clarity, because, you know, we're learning. It won't take long. But it, it all is based on these funds that we're creating, these accounts that we're creating to, to maintain within the sewer and the water funds. We have a few bullet points that we'll touch on. Again, guys, it's, it's going to be quickly, but we do have just a couple of questions. I'm sure you guys probably want to answer pretty quick. Bart, if you want to jump in on that?
Well, I'd just say that the, you know, we had a number of concerns about the budget. Most of it was just concerns, things we'd like to see, but there were two deal breaker issues. One was the general fund having a deficit for the year, and the second one was the required funds that did not appear to be funded or exist. Both of those have been resolved.
Yeah.
And, and satisfactorily.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
For, for doing that. And we are now down to the, the point of just having some additional concerns through this, as we've looked at these accounts, that we'd like to have addressed. So for instance, if we take the first account, which is created, which is the sewer operational and maintenance account, it was, it's governed by 715090. It's been there since 2011, so this is really the first year we're coming through with that. Uh, it can only be used for operation and maintenance and treatment works. Deposits have to be made, and this, this is kind of the, a little bit of a problem here, in the amount of $998,000. The ordinance says we will fund this at $998,000. The revised budget proposes that a new line item, which is there, is funded, but it's only funded to $231,000 for this fiscal year, not the $998,000 that's required. Now, of course, the problem is, we don't have money to fund $998,000 for this line item, and we, and that's what we need to address. We can see that we are more than adequately funding the operation and maintenance expenses that, that are necessary, uh, but we are not funding it to the level that's required by our ordinance. Right? Our ordinance says you require it to 998. We're not doing that.
I don't see how we can do that.
I agree.
There's no way.
So, so we have a...
There's no way possible.
We have a problem. That problem needs to be addressed, and not now, not before we pass a budget.
Yeah, no, this is just, I'm just...
This is what you're talking about in the next minute.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, right.
We're going to touch on it, so everybody can kind of get on the same page.
So, so the questions are, you know, how, how could we ever fund $998,000? Is this amount reasonable? How was that amount set? Because this was part, this was part of an...
Am I able to ask Christine? Am I able to, are we able to bring her into this conversation?
Yeah, she...
I would like you to.
Well, I'm going to. I, I just, I want to make sure you all that, that, again, I don't know point of orders and things like that, so.
The 200 and some thousand dollars, I didn't bring mine with me. Um, you add the 415,000 to it, that is budgeted for wastewater debt service. You add those two numbers together. No, it does not come up to 998,000, but it's clipped there at 200 and something. But he, the engineer stated that the wastewater debt service and then the, oh, the...
The 400, I'm sorry, how much? You said the 400?
It's the 415,000.
It's the 429, and that's the operational maintenance account for water. Right?
And then you have a 479 for P and P.
And then you have 479 for P and P expenses.
No, if you actually look at your budget...
I, I think we're off, I think we're off. Let me ask if we're off track. I don't think that's the question.
Yeah.
The, the question is, when this was originally established, and, and someone decided that we needed an ordinance that said we'd put $998,000 here, how did they get that number?
Well, and, and that's based on the bond issue, correct? That's based on, now, part of my question is, did they have actuaries that come in and set up those numbers based on our income for the city?
They administered it, yes.
Okay. How in the world did that have that high of a number?
He took all of my budget numbers, and he came up with it.
So I, I think we need to revisit that, and it, and it will require some discussion with the state to amend.
Yeah.
Correct? So that, so that's, that's one question. And we were also curious, and I think Sal already answered this question, when does state oversight end? Because that'll end when the bond is paid back, and then we can do what we want with this ordinance. But that's 20 years from now, right? 20 years from 2011?
This is on the sewer, we talked about...
This is on the sewer?
That bill will be 20...
2031?
That's the long-term bond.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a long term.
So...
But we can have that, the man that was here representing the company loan us money come back.
That's what we need to, because...
We weren't involved in it, so...
Yeah.
And, and this number just seems totally unreasonable. We have $150,000 worth of operational expenses this, this year. Why are we having to fund it at $1 million?
I don't know. We, that's a good question.
So we can answer that.
What we should do is have one that issued the bond or loan us the money come in and tell us.
Because in essence, we're under compliance.
And then...
Right, and...
Does, does that cause a default concern for us?
With the bond issue?
Okay. All right, so we'll look into it.
Yeah, we'll look into it, because he said we had any questions that he would come back.
And then the next one is, what happens to surpluses if there are surpluses? We don't have them in this budget, but in order to understand this ordinance, if there's a year-end surplus, do, does that get canceled out of this, the sewer? This, the sewer's operational and maintenance and go back into general funds? Is that what we're doing?
Uh, is that what happens?
So I, so I have, and, and that'd be great, because that's a way to comply with the ordinance and then get money.
That's what we've been doing all along.
But I have a concern, because our ordinance says the funds we put in there will only be used for this purpose, that then when we cancel that surplus and put it back out...
But that's what you budget for that line item. And if you have more in that line item at the end of the year, that's when the surplus goes back into the general fund.
And so the prob, but the money is coming, not out of general fund, the money is coming out of water revenues.
Absolutely.
And it is winding up in general fund through our cancellation of this surplus.
Right.
If there were one. And I don't, I think that that's a problem. So I'd like to talk with Mike Mudd about that.
Okay.
I'm not asking that we solve it. I'm just saying that there may be an issue.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's also an error in the textual amount in this ordinance. It's missing a word, hundred, which, and it happens to be in the thousands category. So the numeric value is correct, but it doesn't read. So I mean, we need to amend this just on a typo level anyway. Okay, moving on to the sewer replacement account. This is governed by 715090. It's been around since 2011. This can only be used for the purpose of ensuring replacement needs of the treatment works. We're required to put $38,000 in it annually. Uh, the revised budget proposes that we do exactly that. Totally satisfied that this fund is fully covered by the budget. The questions I have on this account, is this a capital improvement fund? For what can these funds be used? Right?
The only thing that those capital improvement funds can be used on is replacing large equipment associated with that line item.
Okay.
It is not to build a new facility.
Oh, okay. So see, that's different than what we were understanding.
Large equipment, the large equipment running the, the treatment center itself.
Say you had a motor or a pump, intake pump that went out.
That's what I mean.
So it's, it's not for the facility, which...
It's not to replace the facility.
Right.
It's to replace the large ticket items.
So...
Same thing in this account, that does that, if we have surpluses, because this is the first year we're going to be funding this, surpluses are going to compound as well?
Do we have that?
Yes.
I mean, I, I would guess because of the issues we've had, that would be ideal.
So if we don't spend $38,000 this year, next year, we're going to put another $38,000 in, and we'll have twice that amount.
It's going to stay in that fund for us to use for the treatment.
Absolutely.
That's great.
So in that way, it does function like a capital improvements account, but it does leave us in a situation where we're not planning ahead for whatever the lifespan of this new facility is, to not need a bond issue to replace it.
Hopefully.
That's true.
Right?
That's what I was looking at.
Part is true.
Yeah. So we'll have, we'll have more surplus to use in that situation.
Excellent. Uh, that's all I have on that account.
Yep, thank you.
Water operational and maintenance account. Now, this one is governed by 715030. It's been around since 1999. Uh, it requires that we put $429,000 in it annually. The revised budget propos, okay, as I understand it from our conversation, the revised budget proposes that this fund is covered through expenditures of pretty much, well, not pretty much, of everything under P and P expenses. That that, that, that category of P and P expenses, all of that...
O and M.
Is O and M. So that whole set of things in the budget represents $479,000 that we're budgeting to spend. And since this requirement by the ordinance is $429,000, we are more than, we're budgeting more than enough to meet this fund's account. And this is paid for against the water sales income, which totals $535,000. So that all being said, I, I believe we have, I'm satisfied that we are fully meeting the obligation of the ordinance. My questions are, um, the way that this is being accounted for is very, very awkward. I believe the ordinance is adequately addressed as long as P and P expenses meet or exceed the required amount. But as soon as you have a situation where water sales is not in a position to cover the account, first off, we don't see that we have a problem with the ordinance, because it's not tracked by these funds, separated and segregated by the ordinance. And then we have to meet that obligation by ordinance through some other means that isn't discussed or, or met, we just won't see it. We'll just be in, in the wrong. We won't be compliant. So, so I think that something needs to be done there from a standpoint of accounting and, you know, tracking and reporting, so that we can see this amount segregated.
But that won't continue, because your bond issue will be paid off.
Is that the short-term bond?
That's what, and when does that, it ends?
2014.
2014. Okay. So this will be the last time we have to deal with it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not clear if year-end surpluses are to be canceled or where such surpluses wind up. And so that's the same as the other operation and maintenance account. I'm just, I want to ask Mudd if, if this is, if this can go back into general.
Well, if we have, and plus, even if it compounds to when the bond issue's over, where would those funds go? Would they go back in the general funds as well, once that bond issue's gone?
Either that, or you can go ahead and start setting aside a capital.
That's what I like to hear.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
That's what I like to hear.
Water capital improvement replacement fund governed by 740 in 1997, but then in 1999, 715030 references it, but gives a different description of what it is. So this is where I was getting the fifth account, because I was going by descriptions, and I hadn't seen that the one referenced the other, but the descriptions are clearly different. In one description, it's specific to sewer, or, or, let's see, yeah.
Yeah, one sewer and one.
No, it's water.
Water, water facility.
Let's see, yeah, it's water. So in one, it's specific to the water, and that's, that's the 030. In the 040, it's water or sewer. So what we have are two con, two different ordinances that are claiming the same fund, that are describing two absolute, and, and they're, they're saying specifically, you can only use it for this. And they're in conflict. So we have, we can't, I don't think, as easily modify 715030, because that's a state, we have a state agreement that brought that into agreement, into being.
You repealed the first one.
So, right. And in fact, that probably technically might have been done in the language of the ordinance.
Put it this way, it probably should have been done.
Right. So I'm, I'm thinking that 700 dot 040 shouldn't even exist.
Right, correct.
Okay? But it, it does. I mean, it is in our ordinance, and it produced confusion, and, and we couldn't understand where is this money?
Yeah, that was, it was contradictory, so for that.
So, so we have to address that. Deposits required weekly from the water revenues in the amount of 5%, uh, and that is funded on a new line item, nice, easy to, to see. So I'm totally satisfied that that's being done. The questions would be, uh, you know, is this a capital improvement account for the water facility, et cetera, it's that whole capital improvement thing? And if it is, this thing's been here since 1997.
Yeah.
How is it that at this point it only has the, you know, we've got a question about the balance. What should the balance in this account be? How did we arrive, get to that balance? Is it that it wasn't funded for some number of years? Is it that we had some capital improvement? It, you know, where did the, we've been funding something since 1997, and we have 250,000, at the rate of $41,000 a year, and we only have $250,000 in this account? That, that's odd. So I'd like to find that answer.
Christian?
When water rates were lower, I mean, when I first moved here in 2000, your water, sewer, garbage, your bill was about $19 or $20. So 5% of, you know, $10 or $15 on your water line item is not very much. So I think, you know, 10, 15 years ago, the amount was just so low, you know, and it's just now getting to a point where, you know, since the water rates are higher, and then it's just, and then it's 5%. So you have a $50 bill, $20, $15.
That makes total sense to me, and I'd like to see it audited. I, I mean, I'd just like to see, for whatever is convenient in terms of going back in years, to see what five, I mean, we, it shouldn't be hard to come up with what our finished year-end user fees were back, say, however far it's easy to go back to, and just take 5% of that and see where we were supposed to be.
This is estimated 41,500 weekly?
That'll, that'll tell us whether or not we have a problem.
Was this annual?
What happened was, the water fees that we collected, uh, sewer rate did not run with water, so consequently, it was always happening in the sewer part.
So it may not have even been anything to collect if it was on water.
I think, I think what happened on that, you're asking me to go back in all ways. But I think what happened on that is that the water rates were so low. The water department, one year, I'm going to say 99, ran in a, a deficient budget of, I'm going to say 44 or 66,000, I don't remember which it was. So to make up, so can make sure that they didn't have it next year, as well, in my tenure, I think, they put a flat rate of $4 on all the residents and the commercial people in Louisiana. And that made up the deficit of the budget at that time. And with, like Christine said, the sewer rate was almost nonexistent, but right now, with the chemicals and the way DNR, everybody's requiring you, the sewer rate is almost the same price as you bought.
So...
How long has it been like that, though? Yes, estimate.
The sewer rate, you mean...
Yeah. Well, being that, you know, we're estimating at 41,500, the amount over 15 years comes out to around $700,000.
Yeah.
So I'm curious as to how...
I think it, that ran, uh, the old rate that they had, like Christine had when she came to work here in 2000.
2000?
I'd say that you're talking about up to, uh, well, I can't really say. It happened sometime, Kathy, you could probably say, or Sonny, because you always hear from 206 till...
You know?
You know? And at the time when I first, when we was talking about the water rates and the sewer rates, uh, they made a motion, B. Gooden made the motion to make a flat rate to pick up the deficit on the water.
I vaguely remember that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Vaguely, yeah.
I think that was when Don Yonkers was on.
That's what he.
Yeah, Don was, Don was mayor.
No, he was on council.
On the council.
Oh, so then Jim Yonkers would have been.
Jim would have been. So, it had to be, uh, 202, 203, 204 before.
I remember that happened.
Before they raised anything, but before that, uh, it was, uh, the sewer rate was.
Yeah, and water and sewer.
Non-existent almost, and, uh, the same way with the water rates, the water rates were. We were just keeping our head above water of what we did charge.
Was that a pun?
Was that a problem?
So, here's my.
It was a pun.
Was that a pun?
Keep our head on water.
Um, but finding the year-end user fee, what we made, back to 97, how hard would that be? I mean, don't, don't we have a year-end budget that we can look at?
They're probably upstairs.
You guys filed budgets. Go to the archives, find that bar.
And I'd be glad, I'd be glad to do that, if somebody can point me there, or I'd help in some way. But I think it would, I, I would feel better if we could account for this amount that's supposed to be there.
Again, all of these things are to help us five to 10 years from now.
Yes.
And it, it's nothing that's gonna be immediately fixed. I think it's just more of a standard operating procedure to find out how we can start tracking this and, and make more, you know, surpluses in places that we really need to, so.
So, last, last thing on that is just simply to fix the conflicting language. So, in consideration of, of the, and I'll try to put this in the form of a, I don't even want to put it in the form of a motion. I don't need this in a motion. What I'm simply, in a friendly way, asking of the administration, before I make the motion to accept this budget, this revised budget, is that we'll go ahead and approve this, and it has our support. But I would like the administrations, you know, I'd like you to, to confirm that you will work with us to get to our satisfaction, some answers to these questions that we just outlined.
Go back to user fee and stuff, it'd be no problem.
Yeah, so we can answer these questions.
Yeah.
We talked about 90 days.
In the next 90 days, we'll work together to do that.
We'll give us a chance to really kind of attack this thing and give Christine a chance to, uh, you know, get involved.
So, how does, yes, you were fantastic this morning, very, very helpful. An impressive ability to explain this, this stuff. So, how, how do I need, do we need to read this, or we gotta read it three times, that way?
We gotta do the budget first.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to do the budget first, so, and that can just be a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amended budget.
Second budget. Okay. Motion made, second call roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Niedner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Awesome.
So, the ordinance, so we're after read three times, right?
Mm-hmm.
All the way through, three times.
Jeff?
Okay. You gotta do that breathing.
Do that breathing.
At least it's a short.
Yeah, yes, you're right. An ordinance appropriating money for the various departments of the city of Louisiana, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2013, and ending May 31st, 2014. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Louisiana, Missouri as follows. Section 1, that there be, that there is hereby appropriated the following sums of money to the following indicated departments and uses for expenditures during the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2013, and ending May 31st, 2014. Animal control, $44,259.11. Code enforcement, $59,948.10.
46.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
I'm sorry, 46, I'm, crap. Economic development, $13,609.56.
76. You need a ruler or something.
Hey, Jim, loan him your glasses. No, I'm okay. Fire department, uh, $109,971.16. General administration, $457,494.93. Historic preservation, $300. Health department, $3,350. Parks department, $106,619.3. Police dispatch, $629,146.16. Pool, $16,950. Water administration, water office, $704,266.76. Water plant, $479,825.63. For a total of $5,851,625.2. Section 2, it shall become an ordinance and shall be in full force and effect from and after the passage and approval. Notice fine.
I'm make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Make, that was a first reading.
First reading of this ordinance.
Okay, you have a second, Nicole, say Kathy?
No, Sal.
Call roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Niedner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Uh, yay.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, second reading. An ordinance appropriating money for the various departments of the city of Louisiana, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning June 1st and ending May 31st, 2014. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Louisiana, Missouri as follows. Section 1, that there is hereby appropriated the following sums of money to the following indicated departments and uses for expenditures during the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2013, and ending May 31st, 2014. Animal control, $44,259.11. Code enforcement, $59,946.10. Economic development, $13,609.76. Fire department, $109,971.16. General administration, $457,494.93. Historic preservation, $300. Health department, $3,350. Parks department, $106,619.3. Police dispatch, $629,146.16. Court, $59,557.70. Pool, $16,950. Water administration, water office, $704,266.76. Distribution, $298,000.
Three hundred.
Oh, three, I'm sorry, $398,633.65. Water plant, $479,825.63. Giving a total of $5,851,625.2. This shall become an ordinance and be in full force and effect from and after the passage and approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second, call roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Niedner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Now, for the third reading. An ordinance appropriating money for the various departments of the city of Louisiana, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2013, and ending May 31st, 2014. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Louisiana, Missouri as follows. Section 1, that there is hereby appropriated the following sums of money to the following indicated departments and uses for expenditures during the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2013, and ending May 31st, 2014. Animal control, $44,259.11. Cemetery, $65,508.56. Code enforcement, $59,946.10. Economic development, $13,609.76. Fire department, $109,971.16. General administration, $457,494.93. Historic preservation, $300. Health department, $3,350. Library, $64,646.16. Parks department, $106,619.3. Court, $59,557.70. Pool, $16,950. Water administration, water office, $704,266.76. Water plants, $479,825, uh, 25, $479,825.63. Wastewater, $2,000, uh, $2,133,666.19. This shall become, for a total of $5,800, or $5,851,625.2. This shall become an ordinance and be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
I'm willing to.
Accept the third reading.
Accept the third read.
Second. Motion made, second call roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Niedner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Unless Bob wants to talk more about the budget.
Bob, you want to talk some more about the budget?
No, he probably called, but they, they don't be just.
Uh.
Call roll.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Niedner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.